Welcome, everybody, to tonight's special meeting this Monday evening, April 4th at 5:30 PM. We're now going to call a meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly, Councilmember Gothel's.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Pappan.
Here.
And Mayor Benia.
Here. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Now I'm going to read information regarding the health orders. Due to the health orders in place at this time, we are holding meetings remotely. Information on how to provide public comment is explained at the bottom of each published agenda. When public comment is announced for the item you wish to comment on, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via telephone, please press star nine to raise your hand, and when called upon, please press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for that specific item. Okay, we move on to the actual study session items tonight. Item one is study sewer rate study initial findings. And we have a presentation from Public Works staff, I believe, Azalea Mitch.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to be giving the presentation this evening. And I'll take a quick minute to introduce myself because this is actually my first presentation to the city council. My name's Matt.
Hey, Matt, welcome, Matt.
I do know several of you for many years now, so it's a pleasure to be presenting to you in my first official presentation to the council. So I am Deputy Public Works Director, and I'm going to give you an overview of some initial findings for our sewer rate study. Mostly, I'm going to be turning it over to Alex Handlers with Barta Wells, who's our rate consultant, and I'm just going to give a brief introduction. So I just want to summarize in terms of what sewer rates actually fund, just to give a quick reminder that it does fund all of our operating and capital programs related to the sewer system, which entails quite a bit. On the operating side, we've got operations and maintenance of the entire collection system, which includes over 240 miles of sewers as well as 25 pump stations that also include, you know, control panels and pumps and equipment that has to be maintained. We've got actual operation and maintenance of the wastewater treatment plant, where we provide treatment to all of the city's wastewater, as well as all of Foster City, and portions of the wastewater from Hillsborough, as well as the Crystal Springs Sanitation District. We also ensure regulatory compliance in terms of our sewer system, both for ensuring we don't have issues with sanitary sewer overflows, as well as with meeting regulatory limits for our discharges from the wastewater treatment plant. And then we have all the engineering and administrative services that go along with implementing all of these projects and developing the capital improvement program projects, paying the bills and all those things. On the capital side, we've got the Clean Water Program, which all of you are familiar with, and I'll give a brief summary in the subsequent slides. We also do all of our collection system improvements that fall outside of the capital or outside of the Clean Water Program. And this would include, you know, collection system improvements that go beyond the Clean Water Program, as well as wastewater treatment plant improvements. As you know, with the Clean Water Program, we're building a brand-new liquids facility, but we still have aging infrastructure on the existing plant site that's going to have to continue to be upgraded over time. So on the Clean Water Program, as you know, this is a nearly billion-dollar, 10-year program effort. It provides for both wet weather management in terms of managing increased flows that we get during the rainy season with inflow and infiltration into the system, as well as doing system rehabilitation and capacity improvements on the collection system side, including our underground flow equalization system, but also providing for improvement in the quality of water that will be produced by the wastewater treatment plants, including importantly nutrient removal, which is a big issue on the horizon, and we are an early actor on that in terms of upgrading our plant. We anticipate completing the Clean Water Program at the end of fiscal year 2526. And this next slide shows sort of the current status of where these projects are with the green lines and dots showing projects that have already been completed. The orange ones are ones that are under construction, and the pink ones are ones that are in design and planning. And it is important to note that we have eliminated some of the projects as we've gone along due to modeling that has shown that the capacity improvements were not necessary after we did other projects in advance of those. Just wanted to show a couple of quick pictures of progress on some of these important Clean Water Program projects. This is the underground flow equalization system, or UFS, as we call it. So the picture on the left is showing the very large hole in the ground at the event center, where the base floor of that is being poured as we speak with very thick concrete floors. And then we'll be moving on to pouring the walls. The picture on the right is showing an example of the micro tunneling system that is installing the sewer line that is going to be diverting flows from the Delaware trunk line to the UFS facility. On this picture, a picture actually taken from the roof of the new administration building that's under construction right now at the treatment plant, showing current progress on a portion of the wastewater treatment plant construction. And just in terms of our future needs, we're going to have needs on both the operation and maintenance, as well as capital improvement side. We do have expectations of increased utility costs for both the UFS facility and the treatment plant. This would include our electric costs, which with the new plant, we're going to have a significant increase in electrical usage. But we're also going to have pumping and electrical usage at the UFS facility, as well as water usage at the UFS facility to periodically clean that tank. We're going to have significant new number of assets added to the wastewater treatment plant, a lot of new equipment that's going to require us to be budgeting for repair and replacement of those pieces of equipment. We do have a need for increases in our maintenance staffing at the wastewater treatment plant to ensure that all of that new equipment is adequately maintained and survives for its useful service life. And then we've got always on the horizon is new and updated regulatory compliance standards and new requirements going into place. Now, on the capital side, we're going to obviously have ongoing sewer collection, repair, and replacement. That's going to go on forever, most likely with our aging system as we gradually get to places that get worse over time and fix those. We're going to have need for ongoing wastewater treatment plant improvements, including some of the stuff on the solid side that, as we said, is going to continue to be the existing facility and is aging infrastructure. And then we do have on the horizon potential for energy recovery with the solid side of things and the biogas that we're producing. And hopefully, that can be something that will help offset some of our increased utility costs. So that's just an overview of sort of what rates cover and what some of our future needs are. And now I'm going to turn it over to Alex Handlers with Barta Wells to go through the initial findings of our sewer rate analysis. Alex?
Thank you. Thank you, Matt, and hello, everybody. So I've been working with the city on developing some updated financial and rate projections. But for this presentation, we're giving kind of a quick background on the rates and then talk about some of the preliminary findings and looking to counsel for some direction where to from here. But this slide here shows the long-term history of your sewer rates, and I'm showing like a typical bill for a typical single-family home. So as you know, your rates are 100% volumetric. Historically, they're based only on use. And you had, you know, going through the 90s, there was no rate increases. You even had some years there were decreases. We started working with the city in the early 2000s, and the goal was to start phasing in gradual annual rate increases year after year to help keep the finances moving in direction where you can support the operating needs and also the capital needs of the system. If, you know, going back further, there's a lot of agencies in the Bay Area that put a lot of pipelines and infrastructure and, you know, 40, 50, 60 years ago, and it didn't need a lot of reinvestment. But a lot of these facilities recently and into the future are going to be approaching the end of their useful life and needing more investments. So that was the whole goal, you know, in the 2000s, was to keep phasing in rate increases, and your council did it year after year and continued to do it until the last drought with volumetric rates. Your rates kept going up, but the usage, you know, decreased significantly during the drought from 2013, 14 for a few years. So the revenue, so people's bills really didn't go up, even though the rates went up, and the city's sewer rate revenues didn't go up either. So you kind of fell behind a little bit with kind of a long-term rate plan, which led up to a, you know, a need for a significant increase. After the drought was over, this kind of a bump up there in 2018. And then the city, the last rate increase was about four years ago. You adopted five years of rate increases, significant rate increases, low double digits, I should say, you know, 15 to 12% increases. And you also transitioned your rates to instead of being 100% volumetric rates, now for residential customers, about half is a fixed charge and half is a volumetric charge to improve revenue stability. And on this chart here, you haven't implemented the very final year of rate increase yet. But you can see, you, to me, no one likes rate increases, but this council has taken very good steps, and you've done a great job proactively adopting your rates in advance to support your funding needs because you needed to adopt these rates in advance before you can get financing for your clean water program. Anyway, next slide, I'll move a little quicker. Next slide, just a refresher. Whoops, I think we bumped a few ahead here. I thought. Yeah, let's go back. Is there a slide that shows the existing rates? If not, I'll just move on. Well, anyway, let me move on. I'll move on to the survey first. I'll get to this slide a little bit. I was going to cover this slide a little later. If we can go to the surveys first. To where do your rates stand in comparison with other agencies out there? Everyone wants to know. And as Matt was pointing out, you guys are ahead of the curve in terms of what you're doing with your wastewater treatment plant. So not all these other agencies on this chart have made, engaged in such substantial capital improvement programs. And the program you're taking on, it's not a once-in-a-generational program, it's a once-in-a-multi-generational program. These facilities are going to be there for many, many years, and, you know, the financing only goes out, you know, 35 years or so. So you've already done a lot of the heavy lifting with your rates. And, you know, in future years, it looks like there don't need to be as many significant rate increases. But anyway, your typical, typical home in San Mateo, your charges are kind of in the, you know, the middle to upper-middle range compared to other agencies out there. And we also have another chart. The next one shows what it is for a low-use customer. You're right in the middle of the pack. And I'll point out, these charts have a couple of colors on them. The dark sections are the fixed components of the rates, and the light section is the volumetric component. So you have a blended rate, so you still give your customers a lot of control over their bill, even though you did phase in a significant fixed component with the last rate increase. Next slide. Just showing you the background of what's happened with build usage on your sewer side. Your sewer bills are based on winter water use between November and March, which is historically a period of, you know, less rainfall and not subject to a lot of outdoor irrigation. So you're not capturing, you know, someone watering their lawn only to a very minimal extent. But looking back before the drought, off to the left side of the chart and page and even beyond, your usage used to kind of bump up and down each year with rainfall and other factors. But when the drought hit after, after 2013, 14, there are substantial conservation efforts made all around the state and in the Bay Area as well, and your overall build use went down about 20% on average compared to pre-drought levels. Since then, after the drought was over, it bounced up a little bit, a partial rebound. And you can see it's been kind of in a steady, relatively steady state for the last few years, which I call a new norm. However, you know, during the coronavirus pandemic, every city was affected a little differently with their usage. Your use came down due to coronavirus, and what we've seen is commercial use, you can see on this chart, the green section, took a big hit compared to what it was previously. So commercial came down, but residential actually went up a little bit as people are doing more, you know, stay at home and work. But overall, it's been a little bit less. We don't yet have the data for the new fiscal year, but it should be available soon, the data that's going to be used for determining the bills for your next fiscal year. Next slide. Shows what's been the big driver of your rate increases. It's the Clean Water Program. And where you are now is that very high chunk in the middle there. This chart breaks it down. The blue section shows San Mateo's share of the program of all of the projects, about 825 million. And Foster City's share is in green, and I just also put a note up in the right there. The treatment plant's about 2/3 of the total project cost, about 640 million, and the collection system is about the other 3/3. And as Matt noted, you know, you're currently in a major construction phase, doing a lot of projects and doing major upgrades of the treatment plant. But those costs are going to tail down in future years, but that doesn't mean your capital program goes to zero because you have a lot of other capital needs out there, whether it's, you know, future upgrades to the treatment plant, but also for your aging sewer collection system. You've got a lot of other pipelines outside the Clean Water Program that are going to need some significant investments. So in future years, staff's engineering estimates currently put those projects in roughly the 15 to 20 million range as this program tails down. It's kind of an ongoing level of future funding needs. On the next slide. This is what I think is a big part of the good, the good story of good news I'm here to tell you. When we originally looked at the, the financial projections, you know, roughly five years ago, we didn't assume that you were going to be getting, you know, subsidized WIFIA loans, the state revolving fund loans. Those weren't in hand yet, so all the projections were done assuming bond financing at what used to be higher interest rates. Well, the city's been incredibly successful in getting a huge portion of your Clean Water Program financed by very low-interest funding programs. For WIFIA, you have two loans, and you're anticipating another SR state revolving fund loan coming through any day now, and the rates on these are incredibly low. And also, when you did revenue bonds, because you had adopted rates in advance, which helped support a very strong credit rating, and because the interest rate environment was very favorable when you did it, your bond rate averages out somewhere, you know, look around 2.4%. So overall, you're getting almost $500 million of extremely low-interest rate financing, and the rest of the bond money you got is also at a pretty darn low rate as well. And what this all translates to is that your debt service is not going up to $51 million as had previously been projected. Instead, it's only going up to about $36 million because of this incredibly low interest rate you're getting on most of the project funding. So on the next slide, it shows a graphic of the debt service. You have some, and I know I'm not giving a lot of explanations of these slides, but, you know, the blue sections show your outstanding debt and the new stuff that's coming in, the blue and the green, the yellow is the WIFIA. The yellow and the orange are the two WIFIA loans, and then there's the anticipated state revolving fund loan in red there. So the total is only going up to about 36 million instead of going, you know, as I say, over $50 million as previously projected. So the other thing I'm mentioning is one of these loans, the WIFIA loan for the wastewater treatment plant, the orange section, you can see that one phases up over time, and I think the financial advisors did that to, A, you know, allow the debt service to phase in, so your, you know, future rates can phase in, and also to structure it a little bit around the outstanding debt service that's already out there to prevent that maximum debt service from going much higher. So this, to me, is a huge success of such a major program, almost $1 billion, and you're able to get the debt service a lot lower with the subsidized, you know, funding programs from the state and from the federal government. And so on to the next slide. What that translates to is that you don't need any more large, you know, significant rate increases. When the projections were done five years ago, it looked like these first five years of rate increases were only the first step, and there would need to be additional 12% rate increases for a couple of more years. But thanks to the, you know, keeping that debt service low, what it looks like is that it's really only small inflationary rate increases that will be needed in future years. And another benefit of these state and federal funding programs that you're getting is that the first debt service payment is not due till a year after each of the projects is complete. So your debt service on this chart here, I'll just point out, the blue section shows the dark blue is your existing O and M, and that's going to phase up over time. You're also going to have some more maintenance and equipment replacement costs with a new treatment plant. All that's factored in. And you can see the existing debt service, all the debt services in the green. That green bar currently is not at, you know, $30 million. It's only at $14 million because a lot of that debt service has been deferred for a few future years. So you're actually a little bit ahead of the game with your rates, which has enabled you to, you know, generate some significant cash funding that you've been able to put to the project to reduce debt financing, and also gives you enough cash reserves so that you can go through this SRF loan project without needing to borrow money on an interim basis to get the project done. The orange section shows the orange, shows the cash funding needs. Yeah, okay. Some of it for the Clean Water Program and dark orange in the yellow section is your future. So again, the big picture is you're doing very well. The rate increases that you have done have put the sewer enterprise in a much stronger position, and thanks to the reduced debt service, you're not facing the need for, you know, double-digit rate increases the next couple of years. And the next slide. Just move on. Just summarizing what I've been saying. You've done a great job with your proactive financial planning and rate increases. It looks like you only need inflationary rate increases going forward, and we're building in everything, including all the new O and M, the future capital and all the debt service, and that's kind of our plan now. This is kind of preliminary. We're going to be incorporating some updated data. You'll be getting new usage information, owning the numbers a little bit. But since you already have one final rate increase already on the books, the plan was to come back potentially in early 2023 with updated financial and rate projections, which again are going to be, you know, small inflationary rate increases to some degree, and seek council's input on, you know, what directions do we take from here? So that's on the final slide summarizes a few of the questions that we're looking for council direction on. One is, this has been mentioned, the new treatment plant, it's got a lot of additional operating costs associated with it, and one of them is additional maintenance staff to help take care of everything and operate everything. It's a much more complex and advanced facility than you currently have. So I think staff wanted to double-check with council on the comfort level of including the additional staff in the financial projections in future years. We've already got it built into our numbers. Two is, is council, support the notion of coming back in early 2023 to seek direction and where to go with your future rates, which look like they're just going to be inflationary rate increases in future years. And three, you know, if so, I know this is preliminary, but we wanted to get council's initial, you know, read on if council would support doing another multi-year rate increase next year again, but just at much lower levels, you know, inflationary rate increase levels to, you know, at least get the authorization to keep the revenues in line with the future funding needs. And that kind of covers what I was going to say, and I'll complete it here, turn it back over to council or to Matt.
Thanks, Alex. I was just going to say, I apologize. I did find the rate slide that Alex was wanting to speak about. So I do want to show, which just shows the existing rates for the five-year rate increase.
I think we saw that on another chart, Matt.
Yeah.
Yeah. The one that had the steep incline at the end. Okay, then back to the council. We see the three directions that staff is looking for here. I asked council members who would like to make their comments first or ask their questions. Any council member with any questions?
I think Diane has a question.
Yes.
And then, and then I'll go after the deputy mayor.
Thank you. I can see that now. Thank you, Joe. Please, deputy mayor.
So quick question. Do we, have we done multi-year rate setting before? I thought that we had, but I can't remember. We have done it before. Okay. And what was the length of time that we did it before? Was that a three-year stint? Five?
I thought it was five, and it was double digits.
It was five double digits. That's correct, and the upcoming year will be year five.
Okay, all right. Okay, no further questions right now. Thank you.
Joe, please go ahead.
Actually, I was going to jump into these questions, but I can hold off until after public comment if we're going to take public comment.
Yeah, that's fine. We're going to take some public comment. Councilmember Lee.
Um, yeah, Matt, I was just hoping that you could, you could speak in like as plain language as possible for the public to, to show what is, what is the difference between the, you know, the debt service that, like, the, the loan amount that we were projecting with, with and without the debt service and the low-interest loans and how that impacts the rate payers? So I think it would be really helpful just to kind of reframe the conversation a little bit in terms of like what, how this directly impacts the rate payers, what their, what their bottom-line bill will be, and how our efforts to, you know, to create a stable financing picture has helped the rate payers today.
So if I understand the question correctly, it's basically how would rates have looked if we did not get all of the financing that we've gotten?
Yes.
And I'm going to have to probably ask if Alex can, can answer that one because I'm not, I'm not able to.
I see Finance Director Lee has raised his hand. Would you like to address that, Rich?
If I may, so the question is, if the, if the city had to access the bond market rather than getting these low-interest loans, what would the cost to the rate payer be ultimately? And I actually posed that question to our financial advisors in preparation for this council meeting. The answer is about $2 million in debt service per year. They'd have to pay additionally if we had to actually issue bonds and rather than getting low-interest loans.
And what, like, how would that look in terms of how we would need to adjust the, the rates?
So if, if the, if the deputy director could flip back to that slide that shows the debt service payments. Perfect. So instead of going up to, and the number I referenced was solely for the SRF loan that the council is going to consider later this evening. That number, that ultimate debt service number would eclipse 36 million, be closer to $38 or $39 million per year.
So, Rich?
Okay.
Go ahead.
Well, I think, I guess I just, I feel like we're talking in a, in a very sort of like financially technical level, and I'm just hoping that we can kind of bring it down to the, you know, to, to the folks who are just reading their bills, right? And so that they can understand how, you know, how fiscal policy has benefited them in terms of us, our approach, and how, how it has saved rate payers. And, and as we contemplate, you know, potentially, you know, another series of increases, those increases are, you know, at least from my understanding, significantly less than they would be if we hadn't been able to do this low, low-interest financing. So I just want to make that really clear and explicit in as plain language as possible, if you can help me.
If we had not gotten the low-interest loans, it would feel like $10 a gallon at the pump for regular rate payers. That's, I mean, come up with a better analogy, Rich.
Yeah, I mean, the benefit, obviously, is that we're spreading out the costs of these, you know, the billion-dollar Clean Water Program over 30 years and 40 years, depending on which loan you're talking about, over, you know, a significant period of time that if we hadn't had that financing, we would have had to cash fund those projects. So we would have had to come up with rates high enough to fund a billion dollars. That's if we had no financing whatsoever. I think as Finance Director Lee was talking about, there's a difference between bonds versus these low-interest loans. And so I think it's somewhat difficult to say exactly what it would have done to rates if we hadn't had the financing. But I see Director Mitch has her hand. She may have a better answer to this.
Good evening, Azalea Mitch. I just wanted to refer back to Alex's slide. The financial strategy was indeed conservative, and the adopted, the five-year adopted rates, if you go back, Matt, to the Was indeed conservative and the adopted, the five-year adopted rates, if you go back, uh, Matt, to the. Slide before the final slide. The financial strategy did project two more additional years of twelve percent increases. So that would have been. Uh, twenty twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-four, twenty-five at twelve percent. The next one. And what we're talking about now is because of all the great loans that we were able to receive. Instead of two more years of twelve percent rates. Really looking at inflationary increases of three to four percent. So that is a huge difference. Getting to your point, council member Lee, that. The financial strategy as the clean water program, as we embarked on the program. Really assume that we would be coming back to you requesting uh, support for additional rate increases at the twelve percent level.
Thank you very much, Director Mitch. Uh, I want to take a stab at it because. I know director, uh, finance director Lee said two million dollars per year. I was looking at the chart. It looks like thirty years. So I think that equates to about sixty million dollars, two million dollars per year over thirty years. Is that correct, Rich?
Yes, I think that's a fair statement.
There we go. I think that kind of says it in a nutshell there. Great. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I I thought of another question, but I see Mr. Handler says his hand up as well. Maybe he wanted to add something.
Thank you, Mr. Handler.
Thank you. No, I just wanted to clarify that the two million Rich was talking about was. That's just for the S, the most recent SRF loan that you're getting.
Okay.
You're also benefiting from millions of dollars of debt service saving savings from WIFIA. The two WIFIA loans, which is really. You know, a major decrease in debt service. That's. Now you don't have to raise rates for that.
I think that might be another fifty million that we're saving over the period of those loans too. Is that correct, Director Lee?
Just to, I can only, uh, can't do the math in my head, but the. The rate that was assumed, uh, if you look at this slide.
Yes.
For for interest rate for issued debt for the bond market was about five percent. The rate that we got for the WIFIA loans was one point three percent. So definitely to the the rate payer's advantage.
That's a big savings. Yep. Any other questions, uh, council?
Yeah, my question is about the second question that we are posed on the last slide, and it has to do with, should we just go forward with the? Uh, inflationary level rate. We're not suggesting that we can just put a automatic increase on this. Isn't this subject to two eighteen? And wouldn't we have to make these increases on an annual basis, even if we chose to do that? And would that be? Setting it at a lower rate than is necessary right now? Don't we want to keep pace so that we don't have larger jumps in the future? Am I understanding this correctly?
Yes, that's correct. I think the expectation is that we want to. Pursue these inflationary level rates so that we don't fall behind and have to do larger increases later. Um, I I think Alex could probably speak to whether or not I think you you can adopt a. A five-year rate structure similar to what was done in the past and setting those rates. Uh, we may have to procedurally come back annually to get the council's approval. On those, but I'll let Alex uh, add to that if if he's got more.
Yeah, what would Matt just said is exactly correct. You have to go through the Prop two eighteen process for any. Additional rate increases in future years. So the. The thought was we'd be coming back to council in early twenty twenty-three. And trying to hone those, you know, numbers a little bit more and then seek council input. On, you know, what do we want to put in that Prop two eighteen notice? And there's different ways of doing it. We can kind of talk about some of the pluses and minuses when the time comes. But the good news is, you know, the the level of increases look to be inflationary in future years, not. You know, so just treading water to keep yourself from falling behind in future years.
Excellent. Thank you. I have nothing further before we take public comment.
Thank you very much, and I believe we're about ready for a public comment unless anybody has anything else. I see only four members of the public and no hands raised. Does anybody got to raise their hand here? Not seeing any. Last call. We're gonna close the public comment, bring it back to the council. And um. Go back to who has their hand up here. That would be council member Goltz.
So yes, I I think we need to fully staff the new wastewater treatment plant in. In the ways that are necessary. Yes, I think we should keep pace with inflation and and set rates that will prevent. Future double-digit increases. And yes, I support a five-year rate structure.
Thank you very much, Joe. Council member Pappen or Vice Mayor Pappen.
Um, well, first of all, I I I want to say um. That the financing for these. Enormous capital improvement projects that have been long overdue. Um. The financing was sophisticated. It was um. Nuanced, and I'm so grateful to our staff and you know who you are, between Public Works and the Finance Department. For all the work that you put in to go after these low interest WIFIA loans from the EPA. To go after the state resolve revolving fund loans. Um, it's made a difference to our rate payers. It's made a difference to getting the project done and um. I just, I have to acknowledge what great work you all did. So it's very rare that as an elected, you're in a position where. You were anticipating needing a twelve percent increase and you don't need that anymore. That's pretty terrific. So thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm a. Uh, yes to the first one. I am a yes to the second one, and I'm a yes to the third one.
Thank you very much. Next council member, Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm basically gonna uh, concur with uh, council member or deputy mayor Pappen and council member Goltz. Uh, I'm a yes on all three, and thank you for this excellent thorough presentation.
Thank you very much, council member and council member Lee. Please go ahead.
I'll keep it short and agree with everyone.
And I feel the same way too. So staff, do you feel that you have all the direction needed?
Yes, thank you very much.
And uh, Matt, I want to say welcome to your first meeting at the city council. Uh, I've appreciated knowing you at the council. I I mean, at the county and look forward to more of your great work here at San Mateo.
Appreciate that. Happy to be here.
Okay.
Matt, you've only been here for like a year and a half, right?
It's only been seven months.
They they keep the good ones behind curtains for a while.
Welcome to the good side, Matt.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we'll be moving on then to the next item tonight. Which is going to be uh, the presentation on diversity, equity and inclusion task force, some updates. I believe we'll have Kathy Kleimbahn and or Heather Stewart with us tonight.
Um, good evening, city council. Um, pardon you. I try to get this in the proper. Mode. Okay. Wonderful. Is everybody seeing the presentation?
Yes.
So thank you. So um, tonight I'm here to give you an update on our diversity, equity, inclusion task force. And also to get direction from council on whether to move forward with a diversity, equity and inclusion strategic plan. So just as some very brief background, as part of your strategic plan. For this current fiscal year, so the one that was adopted. Last year, um, the city council directed staff to form a diversity, equity, inclusion, or DEI task force. Um, after several study session discussions on how the task force should be formed. It was decided it should be a non-bran act body. Um, suggested to have twelve to fifteen participants. That would consist of organizations that would be invited to participate and they would be allowed to themselves determine who could best represent them on the task force. Um, this provides flexibility to adjust membership as needed, whether organizations need to swap people out due to commitments. Or whether we need to add additional organizations or some fallout over time. Um, we also move forward with two city council members that are serving as liaisons. And in that role, they're serving similar to the. Liaisons to the city's commissions and that they're providing some advice, but they're not regularly attending the. Actual task force meetings. The assigned liaisons for this task force are council members Pappen and Lee. So um, at staff's request, the actual launch of the. Task force was postponed until after the district election transition, since that was a very intensive process. Um, so we got going on reaching out to the organizations this past December. So staff reached out to roughly twenty. Plus organizations in the community. Um, you know, based on our discussions with council, these varied between neighborhood organizations, some of our nonprofit partners that we work closely with. Other public agencies that we partner with, including um, the school districts at the elementary, high school and college levels. Reached out to religious coalitions and cultural organizations. So not all of the organizations approached had availability or interest in participating. Some actually did express interest in participating, but ultimately didn't end up attending the task force meetings that were held. And we still have complete flexibility to add in organizations over time if there's interest. We also, as a city, have hired a professional facilitator, Alicia Santa Maria, who's assisting us with running the meetings. So this is a list of the organizations that are currently actively participating in the task force. Uh, as you can see, again, represents a a broad spectrum of different types of organizations across the community. And this was also included in the staff report. So um, the task force has been meeting monthly since January. So they've had three meetings to date and the next one's coming up in the next couple of weeks. At the very first meeting, the members very clearly and strongly stressed that they really wanted to be involved in the task force. If it was able to develop really actionable recommendations to the city council. They want to make sure that their time is well spent and that they see. Um, clear results from their efforts and participation. We had um, several discussions on what the initial focus should be. And ultimately um, selected the topic which was suggested by council of focusing on enhancing community engagement and civic participation. From underrepresented, hard-to-read communities. And to date, it's been a really interesting conversation. It were really spanning, when we say underrepresented communities, we mean across the spectrum. Whether that's representing income, race, language, age, disabilities. It is really all encompassing. Um, and so it's been a really interesting conversation thus far. You know, there there. Will be a point when we've completed this conversation and the task force will then need to determine sort of the next topic to focus on. City council input is always appreciated on that. Um. And then also, this really came out of the very first meeting, but the task force members themselves were. Somewhat surprised and concerned that the city did not have a clear. Strategic vision of our own approach to diversity, equity and inclusion as a city. Um, so as a result of that, this brings us to the recommendation that staff has for the city to move forward with preparing a DEI strategic plan. So as you are well aware, as the council, you have moved forward with several really important resolutions stating DEI principles and your support of those. Additionally, for the last two years, we've had an active internal DEI staff committee. But we haven't really pulled these efforts together and and really. Focus them down into creating a really clear. Statement and vision from the city. Of how we are incorporating DEI in our internal operations. So when we say creating a strategic plan, we're really looking at a framework. And not necessarily a plan in the same way that the general plan is a plan. That's like a big thick document that sits on a shelf. We're really talking about something that's very high level, not. A very long or extensive document that really focuses on. Making sure we have a common understanding of the definitions of what we mean when we say diversity, equity and inclusion. What the city's vision, what our goals are. And this is really important to me is how we make sure that we are. Determining that the outcomes of applying those principles are actually having the effect that we. So setting forth a strategy to evaluate the outcomes of of how we're designing our programs and projects to embody diversity, equity, inclusion. So the intent of this would be that it's a working document that can be updated frequently. It's it wouldn't be um, set in stone and left dusty on a shelf. So um, you know, to really think about how we would put this together, staff has looked into recent efforts in other jurisdictions. Um, what we've determined is that we will need to hire consultants to help us facilitate the process, although a lot of the thinking and work will happen internally. Um, certainly we'll make good use of our internal DEI staff committee who would. Advise us on the preparation of the plan and also we would build off of a lot of the work that they've already done in in setting for some goals and defining some terms. Um, in addition, the external task force that is also the subject of this presentation has expressed interest in providing some comments on the plan once it's drafted. Just to make sure it's following the best practices. Um, that they're putting in place in their organizations. And, you know, finally, it'd be really critical for this to be a plan that's adopted by city council. So we make sure that our leadership from. From council members are behind what the city's vision and strategy are. So we've. Talked to some consulting firms and looked at the possible pricing for something like this, and we really anticipate that it would cost us roughly fifty thousand dollars, which includes both the development of the. Plan and possibly some assistance with additional assistance with facilitation for the DEI task force. I'm just touching on another topic as part of the city council's own strategic plan development that. You know, the goal-setting session that we had back in January, there was a suggestion that the DEI task force. Um, be tasked with looking at police transparency. So I I just wanted to mention that this will be something that staff will be bringing back to city council at a later date for a more in-depth discussion to get a little bit more direction and understanding of council's um, intentions. And interests in this area. Um, we. I, this is an aside, I think we we probably want to be very thoughtful. This is a very complex discussion and we want to make sure. That we are inclusive of all the stakeholders that need to be part of that conversation and the existing task force. May not. Include all the people at the table that you may want around the table for that particular conversation. So we'll just sort of put a pin in that to a later date, but I did want to bring up that one. So. What I'm asking for direction on tonight is to see if the city council does support the development of a DEI strategic plan. And if you have any comments or suggestions on staff's proposed approach. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Back to uh, the council. Do we have any questions? Yes, go ahead, council member Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, excellent presentation. Thank you, Kathy. Um, uh, one question I had is why, um, can you explain why we need a facilitator for these meetings? Um, and why couldn't someone from staff facilitate these meetings?
We determined that having a professional facilitator, because the topics can be challenging, some of the issues that we get into and. You know, we think it's important for that discussion to be led by somebody with a lot of experience facilitating, you know, while staff. Has some experience facilitating in community meetings. We're not really professionals. In that same way, and it sort of. Helps um, make it. A more um, safe and neutral space for conversation.
Okay, thank you. And and a similar question for the consultant to create the plan. Um, is it that staff doesn't think they can do this on their own or a consultant would would be easier or what? Can you uh, go over the the the? The background behind wanting to um, hire a consultant for this?
I think that it's a combination of, you know, consultants that we've looked at and we've talked to some initial consultants, like. Level of expertise in developing DEI strategic plans. We don't directly have that expertise on city staff and then also. In terms of staff capacity, um, just needing that extra assistance and actually pulling the plan together and and fully drafting it.
Thank you.
Very much, uh, councilwoman Lee.
Thank you, Kathy. I had a question about um, the sort of the geographic representation component and I, you know, we've talked. Um, a lot about, you know, especially having gone gone through districting, uh, the sort of gap in. Representation from the east side and and from, you know, from my time back on the Parks and Rec Commission. There were also considerations about service levels and and programming um, on on the east side. So, you know, in Shoreview and North Shoreview. Um, so I wanted to ask about, you know, expanding or or specifically doing outreach to make sure that we're including. Um, representation from from east of one-on-one.
So we did reach out to neighborhood organizations in that area and um, we did have a commitment from North Shoreview originally that they were going to appoint someone to attend, but unfortunately, um. They, although they've been included on all the meeting invites and information, um, there hasn't been anyone available. To attend. So we we would very much um. Be open to that.
Okay.
And again, the 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 way that it's put together is there is that flexibility to. For someone to join at the later date.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you. And then. Okay, thank you. And then the other question I have is, you know, are there, are there, is there sort of upfront internal auditing that we can do, like loose auditing? In terms of, you know, for example, looking across all departments on, you know, in, from an equity lens, looking at where we're providing subsidies, like I, I'm thinking about like the subsidized parking program. And then the subsidized program for parks, you know, parks and rec programs, services. And there's, there's a number of subsidized programs that we offer at the city level. And I'm wondering, like, are we going to be coming with, with, with some information upfront? In terms of like what our scope of services are, where, where we are already directing resources to serve under served community members or low income community members, like looking at language access efforts. You know, translation services, for example, like are there some kind of baseline level assessments that we're doing in preparation for the, this work? To frame the conversation?
So I think part of this will sort of, sort of the opposite of that will frame how to assess. So to make sure that we have clear outline vision and goals that we can say, are we needing those? Are, are the programs designed to meet those goals? And I, I think I've given this example and my apologies if I haven't given it publicly, but when we originally had the two surface slots that are currently under development, there was always a strong intention to keep those low costs to make sure, for example, that there would be access to low cost parking for people that needed it. But we didn't have anything in place to make sure that those were the people that access the parking, right? And so when we redesigned the program, we've now needed income eligible to get lower cost parking permits, but, but allow them to be anywhere. So that's sort of an example of how we reassessed what we were doing. But I think there's a further level of assessment that we will need to do in the future, for example, to say, well, now that we redesigned it, is it, did it work? Are people taking advantage of the program? You know, has it been successful? So it's sort of building some of that criteria we'll, we'll need to look at to be able to evaluate a broad array of programs across multiple departments. Just to see if they're really having the intended goal.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, I'm thinking when I've served on our task force is in the past, you know, we, you know, the facilities, the facilities strategic planning task force, for example, we had finders worth of information to, to even just get to the, the goal setting part of it. And, and I would just encourage us to be really thoughtful and transparent in providing as much information upfront about where we are today, like what is our baseline? And I'm thinking about like the, the demographic survey for commissioners that, you know, I know, I think we're due to do soon. Like having those, those things like in hand, you know, looking a list of all of our subsidized programs. So, you know, you know, tying in all that work that the PD has done with their, their dashboards. Just making sure that we're, we're being as forthcoming with information as possible to show, to show what we're doing and, and help identify the gaps. Those are, those are my questions slash comments.
Okay, thank you. Kathy, shall I move to the next council member? Thank you. Vice Mayor Pappen, please go ahead. No, okay. Councilmember Gothols, please. Okay, I do have a question myself regarding the fact that I see that we're calling our plan the diversity, equity and inclusion plan. But I noticed that, well, when I looked at the hyperlink that was embedded in the staff report for Redwood City's work that it looks like we, we might be trying to use for some modeling. I saw that they're calling it, and this is what we call the Vanessa Clean Energy too. It's the diversity, equity, inclusion and accessibility plan. And when I look, for instance, at Redwood City's plan, it's an eight page document here. I think on the seventh page, it talks about their ADA transition plan. So two things, why do we not include accessibility as part of the title here or as part of the work, I'm guessing? I don't know, maybe we are. I haven't heard much about that, but also are we going to be looking at, at least Redwood City is talking about addressing all of its own facilities in terms of ADA compliance? Have, have we done that evaluation and are we going to go farther than that or what's going on with that?
I can answer the first part. You know, when I think of inclusion, I think it does include accessibility, but we certainly can call it out specifically. If that's of interest to the council, that's very easy to do. In terms of the question about accessibility in our facilities, I'm going to defer to our Public Works Director. This is Elliot Mitch. Can we respond to that?
Thank you.
Sure. Good evening. So we do have an ADA compliant consultant who's been helping us through the process. We have evaluated the issues in the public right away and I will have to follow up in terms of the types of assessment, assessments that they have done on our facilities. So I can certainly get that information back to you, but we do have a consultant.
Thank you. And, and, okay, so I guess that's my question. We'll have to, I'll have to ask that when we're making comments at the end if other council members would like to add accessibility to the title. And hopefully, I think there's work to be done there. So maybe we could talk further about what work might be able to be done there. Thank you. I think I see no other council members with their hands up. I can open it up for public comment. Is there any public comment? Right now, I think I may be seeing one. Lisa Tanner, please go ahead. You can unmute yourself, please. Lisa Tanner, we cannot hear you. Okay.
I can go ahead and select the allowed to talk feature. Let's see if that helps.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, that helps. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Great. Appreciate it. Kathy, I was paying close attention to your comments in regard to the flexibility to still add members to this, to this committee. In dovetailing on Councilmember Lee's comment in regard to geographic representation, I was a little concerned as well because San Mateo is such a big city. It seems to have one neighborhood association, or I don't know how many people from that association are in attendance, but it seems like there should be more. You know, the city created San Mateo United so that there would be an easier way to openly communicate with residents all over the city. And I think that San Mateo United should be reached out to so that we could reach out to the people that actually attend our meetings and see if there would be interest from others who live on the east, on the south, on the west. At the very least, we also have members that attend that don't have neighborhood associations, but just come in as associate members. So there's an outreach to some people that perhaps Kathy, you wouldn't have. So I think that that might be something that would be beneficial and include a little bit more of that geographic representation that Councilwoman Lee was talking about.
Thank you, Lisa, for your comments. Kathy, did you want to respond to that at all?
Certainly, if it's the interest of the council, we can reach out to additional neighborhood associations or request that, provided council provides direction on that.
As you stated earlier, okay, so we'll be sure to bring that up in our discussion. I don't think I see any, thank you, Lisa, for your comments. Your hand is still up. I don't see any other hands raised. So I'm guessing we're finished with public comment. Let's bring it back to the council for any further questions or to address questions from staff that they need for this item. Who wants to make any comments or ask more questions? Okay, we're all very pensive at this moment. Deputy Mayor Pappen, go ahead.
You know, I mean, I think the game plan sounds like it, I'm willing to explore it. And I, I don't have any objection to the direction that's being proposed. I say we do it.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez.
I basically concur with that and I too would be in favor of, of expanding membership. And especially seeing if we can maybe get some of the, the underrepresented neighborhoods that don't have well-developed neighborhood associations. I think at the very least, reaching out to San Mateo Homeowners United to see if you can get some of those hard to reach areas is a good idea. And other than that, I think everything else is, is right on track. And thank you, Kathy, for the presentation. And all the work you've been doing on it.
Councilmember Gothols, anything? Okay, and Councilwoman Lee?
I, I fully support this direction. I think that this is a very well-conceived investment that will get really great return on. And I'm excited to move the project forward. I, as I said, I, I'm hopeful that we can, you know, we can do some preliminary assessments, internal assessments and come in hand, ready to, ready to talk with folks about where we are today to help frame those conversations about goals. And, and, and I, I wonder honestly if there are folks through, you know, we've had a surgeon applications through, you know, for our different commission seats. And so, and a number of folks who went through city services and the CERT program. And so, you know, I wonder if we have some east side folks in the wings that we could tap that we maybe haven't thought of. So I, I, I would just say, you know, it would be great to explore, explore the folks who have already kind of stepped up and raised their hand. And we, we definitely have their contact information and applications.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Lee. So I see no other hands raised. Kathy, could you go back to the slide that shows all the groups that, that I think either were invited or have chosen to participate? I think you.
Absolutely. Just give me a moment. This slide is just the ones that are actively participating.
Okay, that's good. And?
Can you see it?
Yeah, there you go. So, so we're looking at, I think, one representative from each of these groups. Is that what we're looking at? Looks like there's already 14 representatives on this group. And I know, I know that we do want to be careful and not have a large, extra large and kind of unwieldy task force composition here. But I do hear both Councilwoman Lee spoke about some yet unrepresented areas, especially I think east of 101. And I do hear Smoohaw saying that, well, I think they'd like to be able to have some sort of a voice there because we do have only one other, I guess, homeowner association. Council, I mean, what do we think? Do we want to just open the door? Do we want to say that we're looking for a couple more groups or individuals that could bring other unrepresented areas to the table? I think we need to actually have some discussion about this because it's brought up in that, or just say you like it the way it is, which is what council, I mean, Vice Mayor Pappen said. So.
If I may, to me. One, one thing I just wanted to say, if, if this task force is anything like the small business task force, consisting of very, very busy, very dedicated folks that, that, you know, can't necessarily make every single meeting. I, I think that I, I too worry that we get too big if, if, you know, everybody was showing up all the time and there was 25 people there. But I, I do think that there's, there's, there's probably room for, for a couple more representatives on this list that, that, that would not put it over the top. And, and I could be wrong. I'd be curious to hear Kathy's thoughts on that. Like, how have the meetings gone so far? Has everybody been available to participate? Has it been unruly? Things like that.
So to date, we have had typically, except for the first meeting, one or two people that have not been able to attend the meetings. So on average, we have about 12 participants in addition to the city staff and facilitators. I think just one thing to keep in mind, and again, I'm happy to reach out to any group that the council directs me to, is that most people here are representing organizations. So, you know, we, it would be a little bit apples and oranges if you have an individual that's just sort of happens to live in a part of the city that's underrepresented as opposed to somebody that's engaged with a me, ideally, we would have a representative that is involved with their neighborhood association or, or with another group. I, a lot of the people that have been assigned from organizations do reside in San Mateo. I, I haven't personally checked their addresses, so I don't know if some of them happen to live on that portion of the city or not. But it's just, you know, it is sort of a, a task force of organizations as opposed to of individuals. So there's just something to keep in mind.
Yeah, thank you, Kathy. And, you know, I, I just want to pose this to the council since Smoohaw is the only organization that raised their hand on this. Would anybody have a call with just offering a, a position to a representative from Smoohaw to join?
Well, I, I was thinking to dovetail on what Kathy was talking about where it's organizational representation. You know, maybe it's worth reaching back out to the Boys and Girls Club, which is on the east side. And they, you know, they are a service organization for low income families. So, you know, maybe, maybe it's just worth circling back with them specifically.
But I, I think that this is not or, either or, but it could be and. And another point I'd just like to make is that, you know, we have a lot of very broad representation on this, on this task force already. If, if we have a group that wants to be a part of this, that, that represents a pretty substantial amount of our population of, of highly engaged citizens, I think that we should, I think that we should allow them. And, and I don't think that these are votes, right? It's not like it's going to tilt the, the vote one way or another. It's just about making sure that, that we have as many different points of view as possible.
Right. So, so let me, let me posit this then. Once again, I, I understand Boys and Girls Club sounds like a good constituency we should try to get because they do represent a lot of kids and parents on the east side of 101. And it's a great organization. And also, I, I just come back to Smoohaw, I guess. They're the only ones that really raised their hand and said they'd like to participate. So, and I think if we limit it to adding two more organizations, if one of them doesn't make it, we'll find another. And, and with, with the, the, you know, alignment though, that we want to have organizations, not just individuals coming. So. Anybody object to that? No?
I would concur. You got to be welcoming. So it's fine by me.
Yeah, great. I see no, nobody is shaking their head. So Kathy, I think, are there other questions you want us to deal with here? Can you show?
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Okay, that's all then. We're good. Okay, well, thank you very much. Have a good night. Okay, everybody. Council is now preparing to go to a closed session. We're going to be hearing an item regarding, we're going to have a conference with, with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation. Before we do that, I'd like to ask if there is any member of the public that has any public comment on this item, please raise your hand. If you wish to comment, otherwise we will adjourn at this time. Seeing no hands. Going to close that public comment period. We're going to adjourn to our team's meeting. We will turn back to report out before we go to the regular meeting at 7:00 PM. Thank you very much. We will turn back to report out before we go to the regular meeting at 7:00 PM. Thank you very much. We're going to be hearing an item regarding, we're going to have a conference with, with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation. Before we do that, I'd like to ask if there is any member of the public that has any public comment on this item. Please raise your hand. If you wish to comment, otherwise we will adjourn at this time, seeing no hands. Going to close that public comment period. We're going to adjourn to our team's meeting. We will return back to report out before we go to the regular meeting at 7:00 PM. Thank you very much.
So it's fine by me.
Yeah, great. I see no, nobody is shaking their head. So Kathy, I think, are there other questions you want us to deal with here? Can you show?
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Okay, that's all then? We're good? Okay, well, thank you very much. Have a good night. Okay, everybody. Council is now preparing to go to a closed session. We're going to be hearing an item regarding, we're going to have a conference with, with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation. Before we do that, I'd like to ask if there is any member of the public that has any public comment on this item. Please raise your hand. If you wish to comment, otherwise we will adjourn at this time, seeing no hands. Going to close that public comment period. We're going to adjourn to our team's meeting. We will return back to report out before we go to the regular meeting at 7:00 PM. Thank you very much.
So it's fine by me.
Yeah, great. I see no, nobody is shaking their head. So Kathy, I think, are there other questions you want us to deal with here? Can you show?
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Okay, that's all then? We're good? Okay, well, thank you very much. Have a good night. Okay, everybody. Council is now preparing to go to a closed session. We're going to be hearing an item regarding, we're going to have a conference with, with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation. Before we do that, I'd like to ask if there is any member of the public that has any public comment on this item. Please raise your hand. If you wish to comment, otherwise we will adjourn at this time, seeing no hands. Going to close that public comment period. We're going to adjourn to our team's meeting. We will return back to report out before we go to the regular meeting at 7:00 PM. Thank you very much.
So it's fine by me.
Yeah, great. I see no, nobody is shaking their head. So Kathy, I think, are there other questions you want us to deal with here? Can you show?
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Okay, that's all then? We're good? Okay, well, thank you very much. Have a good night. Okay, everybody. Council is now preparing to go to a closed session. We're going to be hearing an item regarding, we're going to have a conference with, with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation. Before we do that, I'd like to ask if there is any member of the public that has any public comment on this item. Please raise your hand. If you wish to comment, otherwise we will adjourn at this time, seeing no hands. Going to close that public comment period. We're going to adjourn to our team's meeting. We will return back to report out before we go to the regular meeting at 7:00 PM. Thank you very much.
So it's fine by me.
Yeah, great. I see no, nobody is shaking their head. So Kathy, I think, are there other questions you want us to deal with here? Can you show?
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Okay, that's all then? We're good? Okay, well, thank you very much. Have a good night. Okay, everybody. Council is now preparing to go to a closed session. We're going to be hearing an item regarding, we're going to have a conference with, with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation. Before we do that, I'd like to ask if there is any member of the public that has any public comment on this item. Please raise your hand. If you wish to comment, otherwise we will adjourn at this time, seeing no hands. Going to close that public comment period. We're going to adjourn to our team's meeting. We will return back to report out before we go to the regular meeting at 7:00 PM. Thank you very much.
So it's fine by me.
Yeah, great. I see no, nobody is shaking their head. So Kathy, I think, are there other questions you want us to deal with here? Can you show?
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Okay, that's all then? We're good? Okay, well, thank you very much. Have a good night. Okay, everybody. Council is now preparing to go to a closed session. We're going to be hearing an item regarding, we're going to have a conference with, with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation. Before we do that, I'd like to ask if there is any member of the public that has any public comment on this item. Please raise your hand. If you wish to comment, otherwise we will adjourn at this time, seeing no hands. Going to close that public comment period. We're going to adjourn to our team's meeting. We will return back to report out before we go to the regular meeting at 7:00 PM. Thank you very much.
So it's fine by me.
Yeah, great. I see no, nobody is shaking their head. So Kathy, I think, are there other questions you want us to deal with here? Can you show?
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Okay, that's all then? We're good? Okay, well, thank you very much. Have a good night. Okay, everybody. Council is now preparing to go to a closed session. We're going to be hearing an item regarding, we're going to have a conference with, with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation. Before we do that, I'd like to ask if there is any member of the public that has any public comment on this item. Please raise your hand. If you wish to comment, otherwise we will adjourn at this time, seeing no hands. Going to close that public comment period. We're going to adjourn to our team's meeting. We will return back to report out before we go to the regular meeting at 7:00 PM. Thank you very much.
So it's fine by me.
Yeah, great. I see no, nobody is shaking their head. So Kathy, I think, are there other questions you want us to deal with here? Can you show?
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Okay, that's all then? We're good? Okay, well, thank you very much. Have a good night. Okay, everybody. Council is now preparing to go to a closed session. We're going to be hearing an item regarding, we're going to have a conference with, with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation. Before we do that, I'd like to ask if there is any member of the public that has any public comment on this item. Please raise your hand. If you wish to comment, otherwise we will adjourn at this time, seeing no hands. Going to close that public comment period. We're going to adjourn to our team's meeting. We will return back to report out before we go to the regular meeting at 7:00 PM. Thank you very much.
So it's fine by me.
Yeah, great. I see no, nobody is shaking their head. So Kathy, I think, are there other questions you want us to deal with here? Can you show?
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Okay, that's all then? We're good? Okay, well, thank you very much. Have a good night. Okay, everybody. Council is now preparing to go to a closed session. We're going to be hearing an item regarding, we're going to have a conference with, with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation. Before we do that, I'd like to ask if there is any member of the public that has any public comment on this item. Please raise your hand. If you wish to comment, otherwise we will adjourn at this time, seeing no hands. Going to close that public comment period. We're going to adjourn to our team's meeting. We will return back to report out before we go to the regular meeting at 7:00 PM. Thank you very much.
So it's fine by me.
Yeah, great. I see no, nobody is shaking their head. So Kathy, I think, are there other questions you want us to deal with here? Can you show?
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Okay, that's all then? We're good? Okay, well, thank you very much. Have a good night. Okay, everybody. Council is now preparing to go to a closed session. We're going to be hearing an item regarding, we're going to have a conference with, with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation. Before we do that, I'd like to ask if there is any member of the public that has any public comment on this item. Please raise your hand. If you wish to comment, otherwise we will adjourn at this time, seeing no hands. Going to close that public comment period. We're going to adjourn to our team's meeting. We will return back to report out before we go to the regular meeting at 7:00 PM. Thank you very much.
So it's fine by me.
Yeah, great. I see no, nobody is shaking their head. So Kathy, I think, are there other questions you want us to deal with here? Can you show?
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Okay, that's all then? We're good? Okay, well, thank you very much. Have a good night. Okay, everybody. Council is now preparing to go to a closed session. We're going to be hearing an item regarding, we're going to have a conference with, with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation. Before we do that, I'd like to ask if there is any member of the public that has any public comment on this item. Please raise your hand. If you wish to comment, otherwise we will adjourn at this time, seeing no hands. Going to close that public comment period. We're going to adjourn to our team's meeting. We will return back to report out before we go to the regular meeting at 7:00 PM. Thank you very much.
So it's fine by me.
Yeah, great. I see no, nobody is shaking their head. So Kathy, I think, are there other questions you want us to deal with here? Can you show?
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Okay, that's all then? We're good? Okay, well, thank you very much. Have a good night. Okay, everybody. Council is now preparing to go to a closed session. We're going to be hearing an item regarding, we're going to have a conference with, with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation. Before we do that, I'd like to ask if there is any member of the public that has any public comment on this item. Please raise your hand. If you wish to comment, otherwise we will adjourn at this time, seeing no hands. Going to close that public comment period. We're going to adjourn to our team's meeting. We will return back to report out before we go to the regular meeting at 7:00 PM. Thank you very much.
So it's fine by me.
Yeah, great. I see no, nobody is shaking their head. So Kathy, I think, are there other questions you want us to deal with here? Can you show?
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Okay, that's all then? We're good? Okay, well, thank you very much. Have a good night. Okay, everybody. Council is now preparing to go to a closed session. We're going to be hearing an item regarding, we're going to have a conference with, with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation. Before we do that, I'd like to ask if there is any member of the public that has any public comment on this item. Please raise your hand. If you wish to comment, otherwise we will adjourn at this time, seeing no hands. Going to close that public comment period. We're going to adjourn to our team's meeting. We will return back to report out before we go to the regular meeting at 7:00 PM. Thank you very much.
So it's fine by me.
Yeah, great. I see no, nobody is shaking their head. So Kathy, I think, are there other questions you want us to deal with here? Can you show?
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Okay, that's all then? We're good? Okay, well, thank you very much. Have a good night. Okay, everybody. Council is now preparing to go to a closed session. We're going to be hearing an item regarding, we're going to have a conference with, with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation. Before we do that, I'd like to ask if there is any member of the public that has any public comment on this item. Please raise your hand. If you wish to comment, otherwise we will adjourn at this time, seeing no hands. Going to close that public comment period. We're going to adjourn to our team's meeting. We will return back to report out before we go to the regular meeting at 7:00 PM. Thank you very much.
So it's fine by me.
Yeah, great. I see no, nobody is shaking their head. So Kathy, I think, are there other questions you want us to deal with here? Can you show?
Thank you very much.
Yeah.